Presented, I was. Please say hi.
Hi.
I was posting any motion carries. Oh, a comment and seeing anybody other than staff in the audience, so we'll go to.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, of the board members. Quite a few things tonight. Rick and his crews did start slug calling today, so. I'd always like to give you a heads up in case you get questions or complaints to the north of town, correct? Correct. In North, so that's. That's typically when we get some complaints, so that's bringing our bios out to a farm field, so. Probably with two or three days.
Yeah, usually it'll be. To reflect.
So, a couple events coming up, we did schedule a knowledge public information session. We have two of them on September twenty ninth, one in the morning at ten AM. And that those that will be open to the public, that will also be inviting a lot of seniors to that. And then one from five PM to seven PM, so it'll be kind of an open house style. Just doing, just be in there with some public information. The fire department open house is October thirteenth.
Can I real quick before you move on from that, is it possible to get calendar invites sent? To the board for those meetings? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Very helpful, and I didn't get all those down in time to get them in on my calendar, so.
Yeah, so we can send them, send them out.
Are we doing the fire open house with others that we have asked for years?
I do not believe so, I think that this one will be back at our shop, so a Delta specific one. I think chief's on Zoom, if that's any different, but so it'll be, I think the last couple of years, you've done it out of my whole heart.
Well, we'd like to outdoors ones?
They did, we, we did it for. For COVID, but it was kind of more of a drive through, not really a get out, so. And to try it back at, at the. At the fire station one again, and maybe. Of course, have the different partners like Eaton Dispatch and the county sheriff and some other partners that'll be out there, but not. Probably not other fire departments. Um.
What's the date on that?
October thirteenth. Yeah, we can send out, send these out as well. October twenty seventh, Delta Community Awards. Reminder next week, which we did send out a calendar invite for, for the work plant tour. So hopefully we'll have good weather around four thirty, we'll send out some. Parking instructions as we get closer. Employee appreciation, September twenty second. The, we just had, we had a CIA board meeting today, they passed their budget, so that will. Come to this board as part of our budget process as well. The Delta now you should have received or will be receiving, so this one, this has the election information in there. So. As always, we get pretty good feedback on our, our Delta now and the articles that we have in there. And then last but not least, we did get a, our standard and poor bond rating was confirmed back in August. For a double A plus. So the highest you can get is triple A, but really nobody in this region can get that, so we. We had our double A plus bond rating confirmed, which is really the highest you can get. But just a couple, and this is, I guess pertinent to our budget discussion, but some of the reasons that we received the highest bond rating. Strong economy, access to broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area. Strong management with good financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance. With operating surpluses in the general fund and at the total government fund level. Very strong budgetary flexibility with high available fund balances, very strong liquidity. Very strong debt and liability position and strong institutional frameworks for, so. Just something township wide and for the board, your leadership to be proud of is to have that. High bond rating, so that's very helpful, we do have to go out for money and. You want to, to have such a high bond rating, so. All the hard work in the past has paid off to, to this point. That's all I have, Mr. Supervisor, but have you? Answer any questions, Andrew?
I did have a question just regarding that, and kudos, that's, that's really. A little leadership and staff with the township. Producing those strong bond ratings, so that's fantastic, just. When it comes to the difference and what that means kind of in, in the cost when, when we do go out to bond with that. Any context you can put to that, like a double A, you know, our rating compared to, I guess, what another and, and what that might cost and just the kind of.
Yeah, I asked the fire improvisers, I'm not sure how, you know, if, if they have a metric that would be, you know, this would be like a A rating. Different, like it would probably be different.
The interest rate, yeah, that's what I'm just curious about. I think it's helpful because it's hard for. You know, residents to always understand what that means, but I think if we're able to put some context around it, they can be really proud of that, that it's, it's saving them money at the end of the day, you know, it's reducing costs for the township. Okay.
Any other questions, Frank? Okay, great. So we'll move to the discussion today, which is the first presentation of the proposed twenty twenty three budget, so. Courtney, thank you for all the work that I know you've put into pulling this together.
I think this is my fifteenth. Project presentation. I started. In Dexter, counting. Good evening, everyone. Um. Oops. I touched on one. Didn't mean to move it, but I guess I moved it, so this is a typical slide that points out a few things about the budget. Being prepared, prepared in accordance with the uniform, what they packed in, and we do consult the strategic plan, oh, so that's right, sorry. And that, you know, obviously our goal is to maintain this high quality services and stands, things like the bond rating, those things that are important to the community. Some of the priorities, really, these did not change. Making sure we're continuing to fund our future liabilities, providing for capital infrastructure needs. And the maintaining of the assigned fund balance, which I know is a forward. Forward priority. So I did want to just talk a little bit, I tend to use. Talk about the budget in terms of operating budget versus capital budget, even though they all appear as one big budget, so. When I talk about that, what I basically mean is that the operating budget, which are things like, were things like salary benefits, electricity, supplies, chemicals, all the ongoing costs that we have. We should be paying for those ongoing revenues, right, so things like taxes, revenue sharing, fees we generate that are pretty consistent year to year. When we talk about capital items. Those are things that we can use one time revenues for. Things like fire vehicles, large equipment purchase and building. You don't really want to use. One time revenue to pay for ongoing expenses. Optimally, as I say, there's enough operating revenue to put aside some each year to save for large capital, which is what the township did, for example, with Malho Park, most of that was paid for. With cash. Because enough had accumulated that the cash was available, and so we do have. We still do have some reserve, but if you use the reserve and you don't put anything back in the reserve. Then there's somewhat reserve, right? So that's just one kind of thing I just wanted to, I'm, I kind of touched on some like larger issue or kind of larger topics in this presentation, and that was one that I just wanted to. Make sure since I, like I said, I know I've had useful stars. But when you look at general fund, right, it's. Both of these are in there, generally the nine seventy accounts that you see over our capital accounts, they're usually at the end of each department. Yeah. One other thing that kind of due to the presentation is just a summary slide on our long term liabilities. Employee related, I don't have that in here, but our employee related long term liability, so we have the defined benefit pension that you're aware of for the firefighters. So current funded percentage is seventy six, which is. Good. Unfunded liability is five million dollars, so that kind of puts it in perspective, it's seventy six percent, but the unfunded liability, you know, is, is a good chunk of change. We are required to make our annually required contribution. To the fund and we do, so a part of that is employee. They pay their ten percent, and then the township pays the rest of the contribution. For healthcare benefits, it's a little bit different, the township is very fortunate to have a funded percentage of, you know, ninety one percent, which is basically unheard of. Unfunded liability is one point eight million, a lot of that has to do with the fact that we haven't invested in pretty conservative funds, it's not invested the same way as ours, if we had our. Our defined benefit pension money invested, like we have our retiree healthcare benefit money. We'd have a very large unfunded liability, because they can, they're very more, they're much more aggressive in how mares invest their money, they have professional portfolio managers, that's their job. Our township retiree healthcare benefits are a pretty conservative fund, you don't get a huge rate of return, so that's what creates a larger unfunded liability. We are not required to make our payment equal to. Our art payment, but we are required now to pay the normal cost for employees hired after June eighteen, coming eighteen. So, and that is, we easily do. We easily make that, because our plan is still open.
Sorry, real quick question, what do you mean by normal costs?
So the, so every year. So these aren't supposed to be like, huh, these things, right, so you're supposed to be putting aside the money that that person is going to require in the future, so the actuary determines that, okay. You, your cost this year is five thousand dollars, and if we put five thousand dollars away for you this year, we should have enough for you in the future. So it's just the cost for this year, not any cost from, and, and that's why they put that date on it. Because most people here would have, would have a cost of their normal cost and then an unfunded liability cost that's accumulated over time. So you're only required to fund their normal cost. And that was just trying to kind of force government into dealing with this, for the governments that had not even had a dollar put away. We do expect that these funded percentages will decrease. Because of the market conditions, I mean, that's not going to be a surprise, I don't think. But it, it is likely that those funded percentages will go down because the market has had a rough year, so unless there's a magical rebound between now and the end of December. The investment returns won't be the same as they were in twenty one, which were pretty, and they do smooth them, but still. We'll probably go in another direction this year. This slide, I'm starting to include last year difference between taxable value and assessed value, you can see, I think it, I did a manager from like thirteen percent to sixteen percent different, that's going to keep increasing. As the taxable value can only go up by a certain amount each year, and the assessed value goes up in accordance with market conditions, so you can see the variables that the gap is widening. And then Todd provided just an update on where our values changed for twenty twenty two, so you can see there was a larger increase in commercial, industrial, residential. Just some interesting statistics on where we want to come from. This slide, we've all seen quite a bit, it's kind of historically in this presentation, we talked about this of in relation to the village, so we still do have a very horrible. Tax base.
Hasn't that they pay for taxes?
That's what our, that's what we've kept our tax base in.
I have the sale entirety.
Where's Delta?
Down the left.
Oh. I can't remember. There.
Can you respond?
Can we talk story? I hope you're not getting this, but. No, hang on, I think I got it here. You're gonna. There, okay. I'm just a summary of the revenues and where they come from, so in taxes, state revenue sharing, grant funding. Interest is funny when Sarah was proofreading this, she's like, is that supposed to be zero, like, yeah, unfortunately, that's supposed to be zero, because you can't budget a negative number. So we do still see over our. Portfolio some fair value loss, not real loss, but fair value loss, so I'm just going to go with zero for next year. Purports fees, other fees charges, and then transfers in is from capital projects. Because we did not do the projects we intended to do this year, and this is twenty twenty two budget, we won't actually be transferring much in. We won't need to. But this is just showing what we plan to budget or plan to transfer. This is just the expenditure summary. A lot of small tiny numbers. We'll touch on some of the things that caused some of the increases. Fund balance. Just an update on the fund balance, so we are proposing to use some assigned fund balance for capital projects. I think there's three point one million that was set aside for capital projects, and we're going to use, proposing to use a million of that to fund capital needs in twenty twenty three. And you can see the unassigned fund balance would still be up at ten million dollars. So the general fund budget, just some general comments, the revenue. As I said, the signed fund balance, we were planning to use a million dollars, and then unassigned fund balance, about a million dollars. We will likely break even. This fiscal year as opposed to using a bunch of reserve that we had planned, because again, we didn't do the budget process. And we didn't take delivery of a few things in the fire department. We didn't quite cover operating expense with operating revenue this year, a little bit short, not drastically, it's about two hundred thousand dollars short there. We did not include sort of a one time revenue, but the reimbursement from the CIA, so they'll be giving us fifty thousand dollars back that we had fronted for them to start their startup cost. So that was not in, in this data, but will show a transfer from them to us. So we'll set part of that. The unassigned fund balance will still be over six months. It does include five percent cost of living increase for non-union employees, our healthcare cost increase was shockingly low. But then that means next year it will be shockingly high, so enjoy it, last year seventeen percent, now it's one percent. Five percent would be excellent, just consistent, but so that was a surprise. Our utilization was, yeah, it was really low, I tip, yeah, so. Our utilization was decent, we had a seventeen percent increase, so we had a bigger pot of money and our utilization was pretty decent. So we got away there, and then we kind of continued funding of our retiree healthcare liability. So a few things to point out, management office had the addition of a floating department that's been positioned to help with managers on the backfill and then other departments, so we definitely do a times year where it comes more difficult and. Be great to have someone that could just pop in and, and help with different things they have needed. So I think that will be a really good addition. The police services contract was a nine percent increase for Meane County. Which I think we, we did talk about when we were talking about the village. The building department, the addition of a full time mechanical inspector, we had started that process. Had someone and he, but he was here for a short time, so it is, it will be moved to the budget next year, it has not been built yet. And then in the fire department. They had some increases in their training budget, they have some new continuing out requirements, plus we're paying for our EMTs to attend paramedic school. And we will be in our second year of our ten year lease agreement with Stryker, so this will be the first time it actually shows up in the budget. So that will come from general fund, paramedic, and then looking glass will actually be a part of that as well. Those are kind of our major. Operational increases. Public safety operating, we talked about this quite a bit now, so up from forty four percent to forty six percent, it keeps climbing, that was the reason for our. Request from the village, because it's just taking up more and more of our general fund, and this is only operating expense. If not even including their capital, which, you know, is our animal, which is more on this slide. So the aerial truck, the pumper tanker, we order those in twenty twenty one, it looks like those will come in twenty twenty three, which is great, so we have one point four million dollars in grant funding that we've received, we have literally received from the state for the aerial truck. And the pumper tanker and the rest of the aerial truck amount will come, we've talked about including that from ARPA. We have turnout gear that we ordered in twenty twenty two but won't arrive till twenty three, so all of these things, even though we order them, we don't actually show the expense until it arrives. State, and then there's some smaller capital items from the facility study that the fire department was proposing. And then the park projects that we did not do this year. The only other thing is the Nixon Road bike lanes, which was a commitment from several years ago, and that project is coming now, so they're coming in twenty.
That's, if I can add, that's repaving that whole stretch between St. Joe and Malhoop, so if you've driven there recently, that is a. Got off. So much like Malhoop, it'll be repaved and widened and include the bike lanes.
Are there any upgrades to Sharp Park, Skid?
So, so that will come in our future project list, but yes, yeah, probably twenty four, we'll. We have the grant. So some of the strategic goals, which was also in the memo, and a lot of them fit multiple categories, they're pretty broad, but. Things like community vitality, our park improvements. Connectiveness in the road budget for Nixon. Different communication, we've continued funding for Delta Rocks all summer long, which I think was well received by the public, kind of making it more of a summer festival than just a one day. Infrastructure kind of goes without saying. We definitely have additional fire department, infrastructure, plus our. Treatment plant upgrades, the Ultium projects, continued preventative televising, township sewer, like, because that's important and kind of like an awesome thing that is really important. Because you, anything under around, very hard to tell what's going on unless you actually get in there, and a lot of communities don't do that. Other township funds are in good shape, ambulance on. Economic developments, capital projects and general debt, the general debt fund is where a debon payment for the library flows through, which is a run payment from the library, we will have another general debt fund. If the village passes, it will have to hold that separate. Capital projects increased this year because that is where all of our stimulus money is sitting. Waiting to be spent. And that one point four million dollars. Is the ARPA money coming into the budget in twenty twenty three. And this is our, kind of where we're at with our budgets, so everyone's on the same page, we got three point five million dollars, we have received all three point five million dollars. So some of the things that we've done, well, the only thing we've literally expended is the firefighter COVID wellness. Then we have the difference between the state grants, the aerial, the pumper tanker, two ambulances, that we hope one will come in twenty three and one will come in twenty four. And then we thought that we would use it for the station and the administration building updates. So that leaves us with one point four million. One point five million. That would still need to be, we could still allocate.
And we have to use those funds by?
They have to be earmarked for use by the end of twenty twenty four, and you have to actually use them by twenty six. Technically, because we fell under the cap of revenue replacement. A lot of that is, it's a little bit different, because we could say, hey, we're using it as revenue. From the federal government perspective, we're using this as revenue replacement for payroll this year, we can still keep the funds set aside, but then it's just less reporting requirement, so it's likely what. A lot of doing on our actual report is saying, hey, you know, technically federal government, we've used it to replace revenue, but we wanted to hold it aside so that we can kind of see where we actually use it. But that gives us a little bit more flexibility and timing, we don't have to have the urgency, but so far it has been very helpful for capital, I mean, as you can see, like, these would have been very challenging expenses without it. And I do the public safety use like us. Future projects, just wanted to keep those on people's radar, so we did receive grant funds for Sharp Park improvements, paving Hunter's Orchard Trail and Hawk Meadow, which are actually also planned for twenty four, hopefully. The Mall Ivan Elmwood Connector pathways at twenty four, twenty five. We debate this every time we see. Right? I think it was.
It's got a long club.
Okay. We got significant grants for that, that's the Mac, I think. Or.
Converted to our production program.
Oh. Well, yeah, they have all kinds of the bonus, we'll take it. The Webster Road Bridge was another priority, because that's kind of a one time shot, and that bridge is being constructed, that's the time to have the pulverized path. And then continued implementation of the twenty nineteen building study. Which will be knocking a few things off the list, essentially when we, if we get the military on the substation, that takes not only the substation, but the parks building. And then some of the items from the fire station that we have in there.
This, and bonded to your point, the Sharp Art inclusion, so that. We received that grant a couple of years ago, but it got held up with. The land and water, so we never really received our project agreement, so that still needs design work. So that probably. At least probably two years out, because we'd have to design, design it next year and get it out the following year. And, and plus, everything kind of got moved back with the prices. You know, the bids for Malho Park, everything had to be ultra inflated right now, so we do have a quadra of projects that are in the queue.
Waiting for better days, I mean, the bid result days.
I think the other three are.
Sharp Park and the two paving trail projects, they still need some design work. With those, those will take a little bit of time.
And I think the plans have been the three projects that we didn't do in really early twenty twenty three, so probably like January twenty three.
And, and just so everybody knows, that the Mall Ivan Elmwood Connector pathway, so that would connect into. We have the pathway that goes in front of Waverly High School there up to Michigan, so we would connect there, go up. Up Elmwood to Ivan, and then over to South Mall Drive. Connect up to. Basically at the mall there, where there's kind of pathway that then would lead it in and connect to the east west pathway in Sharp Park. That's for the tri-county federal dollars that we got into the traffic and. The tip.
I, I know that these expenses here for the aerial truck and the pumper and all that sort of thing, we used our ARPA funds for that, but say in a typical year when we haven't had. COVID and ARPA and all that, is, is there like a, a base average that we spend on? Equipment for the fire department or buildings, that sort of thing, as opposed to projects that we choose to do? Which, you know, more the parks and rec, these are more, you know, public safety, you know, health and welfare kind of things that we really have to do. Is there, is there kind of an average of what we spend each year on one versus the other, do they kind of mix, do we try to balance it?
A lot of it is, a lot of it's dependent on timing, so, and, and. I guess also policy, so several years ago, we made some concerted efforts with quality of lights, we've been very aggressive with. Grants for pathways and for parks, almost all of our parks' capital stuff usually has a grant attached to it, and so. You know, starting, starting seven or eight years ago, we kind of really had our foot on the gas trying to get a lot of grants and try to improve our parks and that type of thing, so. A lot of it was timing, not necessarily like a. Exact equation of let's spend a twenty percent on this or this and that, same thing with the fire department. You know, they're a little bit more of a necessity, so, you know, the aerial truck, usually those things last twenty years, so it just happened, you know. We needed, we needed one, and that's a real expensive piece of equipment, same with our engines, and we're a high volume department, so we do. Do use our equipment, the, the years of life get shaved off a little bit just because of how much we drive on the. Ambulances, we are on a pretty good routine for replacing one of those. Pretty much every other year. So, but, but a lot of it is just dependent on what comes up. Now, some of these, like the apparatus bay floor, some of these things were identified in our facility studies, so. Those are coming to light of, you know, some things that may have been kind of deferred maintenance for some of it, just.
So that would be like more of a one time thing, though, it's some kind of installation. So that would be like more of a one-time thing, though, it's some kind of installation, you know, and then we'll maintain whatever it is.
Where every two trucks that have to be replaced, yeah. And the fire department has a schedule on, you know, what that everything's like, that's what it is. And I think with the goal in the past was. Each year, the township would put money into the capital projects fund to build it up so that it was prepared. That hasn't been possible. I mean, we have not done that in the last few years. Now, ARPA has kind of filled that gap, so the hope would be that we go back to that. So that when we're ready, this is our second pumper tanker in not too many years, because when I first started, there was one. That got, it was getting delivered, so, you know, we're in a good equipment space, but everything's going to come up again, right? So you want to start putting the money aside now so that we're ready.
Well, and that's what I'm kind of trying to figure out is which which of these things, if I'm looking at firefighting things, which are more of ongoing costs, like you said at the beginning, we have those. Ongoing costs versus the capital, and I know, you know, an aerial truck, if it's twenty years, that is much more of a capital investment, lasts twenty years. But things that come up every couple of years, it's almost more like an ongoing, and so I'm just trying to put things in different.
I would say ambulances are pretty much ongoing. The the pumper tankers are are probably becoming a little bit more, you know. Usually those would have a fifteen or twenty-year like cycle too, but because they're frontline. Vehicles for us, they get a lot of miles, they get a lot of uses, and then you get to a point where they. Um, you're doing a lot of repairs, um, and and for our residents, we like to have reliable equipment and for our. Um, you know, firefighters, they want to make sure stuff works, but where ARPA fund were also very helpful is we could have squeaked some. Probably some extra time out of the pumper tanker, but now with every, these vehicles are going to, basically, we're going to take delivery two years after orders, so you have to. We have to really start thinking ahead and and be on it, and and because we had just bought a pumper tanker, it was, we already had. For the most part, the specs and the designs, we were able to move a little quicker on that, but it's still taking, takes a long time to take delivery on.
I just want to add, um, Trustee Bowen to your comments, too. Um, I know, kind of just going back a little bit to my inning commission days, and I. Served on the capital improvements committee and. And I will say, all of the departments do a great job, but you really see kind of the thought and the planning in it's kind of short-term, mid-term, long-term, and thinking about that equipment and what's needed. And there's a lot of discussion around that and prioritization based on kind of what's that critical, what would be nice, but and and looking at all those different timeframes, so. Um, it's just a process that can be really insightful, but I I give our department directors a lot of credit in really being thoughtful about that and thinking ahead. So there's, you know, adequate planning for that.
Well, one of the larger things that we did, because only one of the kind of capital but ongoing sort of things in that category was our medical equipment. So by doing that, you know, we've kind of got that as the set payment. And so that we're not kind of messing around, okay, we need a life practice, or that's a hundred and twenty thousand, you know, whatever, the machines, et cetera, so that kind of stabilized that, um. For consistency of training, quality and cost, so.
Which is a nice example of, yeah, being able to spread that out, to know what that cost is, to look at it in terms of twenty years. And and be able to plan. Now, on this future projects slide, um. Would you ever put something like a another aerial truck or something on a slide and call it a project? Or that is more of a capitalist investment?
More, probably more of a capital investment.
Yeah, I guess we kind of use them interchangeably, but I mean, these happen to all of these projects, but yeah, I mean, I'm not sure. At least I work kind of in a good place with a. A better place with equipment, um, but yeah, I mean, hopefully the area will. You know, you know, for a while. I think everybody bought them twenty years ago. Everybody's paid all the time.
And again, just trying to get to keep it in my mind, you know, what what expenses do we have coming up, long, medium, short-term, long-term, and that sort of thing.
And that's why I wanted to sort of including this, just to kind of keep these things on the radar, because we talk about them, but. They don't always get brought up because they're not imminent, and we're buying for three stations.
The chief, the chief just texted me, so they're actually heading down to Sutton tomorrow for a pre-con meeting. Uh, for the new engine, so still expect October twenty of twenty-three for delivery on that. The aerial is still. On time at this point, knock on wood, for April twenty-three deliveries. It is, uh, over, I think over two years, I think we received that grant, I remember, or March, uh.
Yeah, but, uh, for like our course that are very simple. I didn't even expect them to say to give us all the money. I never even asked for any money, and they're just sending me the money, and then I just tell them every three months. It's ordered, should be here, so, and I think that was the timeline we gave the state was. And we had to given them like the furthest it could possibly be so that we didn't have to do an extension. But it's nice to have that those funds on here, and so we're ready to go. I mean, it's already been paid for, I guess I should say, like, because we took advantage of the early payment discount. But we already have the money to recognize the, um, for when we, we had a one point one million right there.
Has the delay in delivery, um, been that way for years or just because of the pandemic or whatever?
Mm-hmm, this is unusual. Yeah, I mean, they always took some time, but, and even our auditors said they've never seen so much prepaid expense on people's. Audits or balance sheets because this is happening all over and it's very unusual. Sure, yeah, so, um, ambulance fund, just a little bit of capital expense in ambulance. I included the striker lease just because that's kind of a capital lease item, um. But yeah, nothing like, so we do expect one, one ambulance to deliver. Sewer fund, um, just kind of laid out, we, we will make some interest payments, kind of a guess on what those will be, because we don't know what we're going to be actually. Drawing from the law. Um, but then you can just kind of see the other capital things planned for sewer, not a ton, there's enough going on. Obviously, but a few things that do still need to get taken care of. And then the increase will, will be the nine percent based on our project, so, um, hopefully. Thankfully, we can actually keep the water increase quite low. To kind of, you know, help offset that, especially the oil game coming on in a few years, uh, that should generate quite a lot. And then some projects in the. Water fund this year, probably the larger one we added was the interior painting of the Miller Tower, that is, um. Not an easy, well, they're not easy projects, but Rick and it has got a good time to do it when they're doing other things related to GR. And then continuing the Saint Joe Water Re Design and gathering these pens. And the other large, and then we have the debt service and the water fund, which we have one coming off in twenty-three, I believe, and one coming, ducking coming up in twenty-four. And then that fund will not have any more duct tape. Which is, you know, pretty remarkable. So we did have to do a small bond for something like the Saint Joe Water Re. You know, so, um, yeah, so the things that'll be added is the CIA contribution we talked about, fifty thousand, yeah, fifty thousand dollars plus. Thirty-six hundred dollars in our two percent, they put in their budget, two percent of their revenue would come to the township for administrative expense. That'll be in here, um. Also, the brownfield budget, but that's an in and out to the developer for another, I think, four years. About it, I mean, the CIA is dealing with it. And you guys do approve their budgets, so it will be part of your big budget approval.
At the same time that we approve this one.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because you'll do brownfield and capital prime, you all.
Um, I was looking at the the detailed, um, budget draft here, and I had some questions, um. The economic development department, how many FTS are in that department?
One.
Just one, and that's a position that is unfilled at this point?
Correct. Tech, well, technically, we have somebody starting on October twelve.
Okay, great. Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was anyone in that right now, I thought it was just one. Um, another question I had, or a question, it's something I just wanted to say, is I I agree with what Courtney said in her memo that. Really, our greatest investment and our greatest strength right now is our staff, our people. Um, those people who, you know, keep the trains moving on time for the township. And, you know, so if if we see things that, you know, we can trim when we we get to twenty-four and we don't want to dip into the fund balance, you know. And I hope that that the board would want to look into things like. Um, I don't know, membership fees, I noticed, you know, there were a lot of membership fees for for organizations, and yes, it's important to be a part of MML and MTA. Leap and things like that, um, but, you know, hard times call for hard, uh, decisions, um. And and some other things too, so not to pick out anything, and and as you said, we don't have to make those decisions until twenty-four. Uh, but yeah, keeping, keeping good staff and and strong services are really, I'm sure, a priority of this board. So, thank you.
And we didn't mention, um. The idea of doing the, like, the one. Payment this year, it was in the memo, because that's not really twenty twenty-three issue, it's twenty twenty-two issue, but using some of the ARPA funds to, to do that is sort of a. Nod to the inflationary issues that we're all facing.
Some thought that we'll have, uh, further discussions on this, which is timeline, Brian, and, uh, I'm being, I'm wasn't chief. And the total approval and budget and everything. Um, typically, we come back in, um. Yeah, October, committee of the whole, for the final follow-up questions, and then we schedule a public hearing. Um, and, uh, typically. We've done it anywhere from, you know, at the end of October, we did it early last year at the end of October, but into first meeting in November. Um, because we have to adopt by the end of the fiscal year, uh, obviously, but usually would like to have a public hearing and adoption. First, maybe the first meeting in November, I can't remember what the calendar says.
Yeah, last year we did, um, we sat the public hearing the first meeting in October and had it the second meeting in October, and then the board affection that night, but. We thought it was pretty flexible, as long as, you know. November would be preferable to summer, so we can wrap up the document, have that all done by the end of the year.
I I really have no interest in doing it prior to November. Uh, I just wanted to ask if all of the departments have presented their budgets to you and their staffing needs, so that's all included in the strat?
Where we could. Unproblemable.
Okay, well, great, well, thanks, Courtney. Good work. Going to this and on the whole staff father work that you all so put into it. You know, your plans and everything to present to Courtney, so we appreciate that, and the thought that goes into the budget each year. Hey, may I have anything else I wanted to throw, go in here?
I do want to just do a brief, um, awareness, um. There are, I've talked several times in the past few months about the ongoing conversation between CADA. Um, ETRAN and Tri-County. And we are, um, there is a CADA board meeting on Wednesday where it is anticipated, not cast in concrete. But anticipated there will be a vote, um, to, um, enter into a management agreement with. CADA and ETRAN, so. It's all good. We did get the seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I think it was, grant. From the state for three years to help, um, fund this transition and experiment and redrawing and what, what this. Tri-county transit might look like.
That was the executive director or some position. They want more control over how does that resolve? Well, I thought there was.
There's going to be a joint. Um, management between CADA and and ETRAN. Each board operates still independently with their own budgets and that. But we have some joint staff that will be working in both, for both, um, individuals.
Great. So, Mary, if I may, um, you talked about the funding. That was made available, can you, I mean, does it cover the costs of the joint staff? What?
It's really for all of the work that has to go into. Kind of redesigning and looking at what could our regional transit look like. There's.
So more like planning type costs?
Because it's like kind of redrawing how we deliver transit services and, um. Ultium and Amazon both present challenges to the existing transit service. And part of the agreement with getting Altman here was that we would address. Transit issues, and so that's the, the grant from the state of Michigan is to help. Really plan that. ETRAN's still going to pay for manage, their own management services, their own staffs and all of that. This money is really, really designed.
Still planning.
Plan.
How the services are structured.
Right, that's how can this work, doing some study about where the needs really are. Because I, I just keep pounding the table, I want, I want to hear. Not what someone up above thinks is the needs are going to be, but the people at the table. Altum, GM, Amazon, and my question remains, are they willing to put any skin in the game, should it be necessary?
When do they plan to roll it out if they do?
It's a three-year grant. So we look at the end of twenty-five, our ETRAN village will be up in. Um, actually, I think we have to re, I don't know if it's twenty-six or, I'm not sure when it comes up, but it will. Comes up, it's a five-year grant, a five-year.
Well, and your question, if they're willing to put skin in the game, they just hit other taxes abated, so the answer, no.
Well, not that, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about if they want their employees all, are they going to, you know, be at the table to bypass this, I mean, what are they going to do? Are they going to subsidize? Subsidize their employee or using the services?
See, no further business, we are adjourned.